Now I'll introduce to you each board of education candidates, one by one. They will have two minutes to explain themselves. And Mr. Vickers wasn't able to be here today due to an emergency. So without delay, let me go ahead and give the trophy to Boils.
Yes. Name is Tracy Boils, Chief of Foreman and Fire Department. Reason I'm running for County School Board is I've had two children who went through the Randolph County School System. I've got one who's 25 and one who's 11. So I've been in school system for 20 years and I've seen the change in the school system over that time. And at this time, I feel like the communities don't have the input in their schools they want to have. And you know, community what makes up our schools, going for the community. You know, schools wouldn't have the backing they have now, but it's changed drastically over the last several years. And we need to get our community back in our schools where you know, our parents and teachers have more input in schools than what's going on than we actually have now. And that's one of the main reasons I'm running for school board. Like I say, I've been in schools, been the PPO president for the last four years. And I've heard a concern to the parents and the teachers and some of the students they have. And when you hear, you know, this in elementary school, you know, you can just imagine what it is when you get on up to those schools in high school. That's one reason I'm running for school board.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy Boils. Next to him, we have Mr. Gary Cook.
Thank you for having us for him tonight. This is certainly the most special forum I've ever been a part of. Cause you guys out front are the reason I do this. Of course, my name is Gary Cook. I currently serve as the Vice Chair of the Board of Education. This is my eighth year on the board. I'm a product of Randolph County Schools. I graduated from Trinity High School. My wife Sherri works at John Marks Elementary. We have two sons, Tyler, who is at RCC, studying criminal justice. And Travis is a 10th grader at Weble High School. On Arcs to America, I'm in Arcsdale. And it's a small business where I'm able to connect with a lot of people in the community, teachers, staff, as well as kids. And I learn a lot and listen a lot there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Next to him, we have Mr. Todd Cutler.
Good evening. My name is Todd Cutler and I want to be your next Randolph County Board of Education Member. My background, as you see in the yellow sheets that I hand out, I'm a graduate of East Carolina University with Bachelor of Science in Business Administration. I've worked for Wing Industries for the past 12 years as Human Resources Director and also do sales. My wife Jess is a 7th grade National Board Certified Teacher at Southwest Randolph Middle School. And I have four kids in Randolph County Schools. The oldest, Zach, he's a college transfer student at RCC. And I have three other kids. Jordan is at Southwest Randolph Middle School and Hayden Reagan are a former elementary school. I currently serve on the Board of Directors for the Randolph County Partnership for Children. And I also mentor a pre-K class at Trendell Elementary School each week. I love getting into the schools, talking with the teachers, talking with the administrators. And my biggest thing that I want more than anything, becoming a Board of Education member, I don't want to see not one empty seat in the next forum that we have. I want to get our parents, our communities, our business leaders, and our local government officials involved in the education. Now, the success of our students depends on us. We can say and send our kids to school, say that's your job. That's not how it goes. It starts with us. It starts with us actively engaging in the success of our students.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Next to him, we have Mr. Matthew Landon.
I'd like to thank the Superintendent Student Advisory Council for having us tonight. It's a great honor to have students host something like this and do something like this for us. I like Gary. This is, this will be my favorite of several events that we've had over the past couple of weeks. I'm from Tabernacle, North Car- Tabernacle in Randolph County. I was born and raised there and I live there with my wife Miranda, who was born and raised in Tabernacle. We've been married for six years and we've been best friends for 22 years now. We have two small children, Kayla, she's three, and Eva, she's six months old. I work at United Furniture as the purchasing manager there. We have approximately 1,100 employees. We're one of the largest employers in Randolph County. And I manage an $80 million budget, purchasing budget. We, I have, I'm edu- I was educated in Randolph County Schools for seven years. I graduated from Fayette Street Christian High School in Ashboro in 2003. And I graduated from University of North Carolina in Greensboro with a Bachelor's in Political Science in 2006. I am a proud member of this county and I'm a proud member of this school board. Four years ago, when I ran, I had no idea the amount of work this would be and the amount of the vastness of Randolph County Schools and the responsibility that it entailed. But I can tell you, we have a great school system. We have a lot of good teachers. We have many great students and I'm proud to be your Board Member.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Finally, we have Mr. Robert Youngblood.
Thank you so much for inviting me here. My name is Bob. I go by Bob Youngblood. I'm born and raised in Christian and a member of Carrollton Baptist Church. I study still adult school teaching. I'm on the missions board, KAR member, special music. Also participate in Pitch for Christ Ministries. I'm a local area businessman since 1986. Moving here from Lexington, excuse me, Davidson County. Four years in the Air Force, Vice Chair of the Randolph Tea Party. My business covers the area of the entire state of North Carolina, southern Virginia, northern South Carolina, east Kentucky. I'm a charter member of the ACLSAL Historical Society, a member of the National Register of Historical Society, NRA. Grassroots North Carolina, which is your premier second members rights lobbyist. I'm an amateur apologist for history and science. Also a student for some years of jujitsu. Married, I have four children. My wife has four children, has 16 grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. We were just early believers.
Thank you, Mr. Youngblood. We're gonna get right to the questions and our first question will be asked on a question chest.
The first question will go to Mr. Boils. Mr. Boils, what is the main motive that inspired you to seek the position of Randolph County School Board of Education?
Like I said earlier, you know, I've had two children in Randolph County School System. I said, I've seen, I've seen the change. I was in this former school on average 10 to 20 hours a week. You know, that's probably more hours than a lot of our administration people are in that school. I've heard concerns of the parents and the teachers about different things that in like what they were going. And as being a volunteer and a community oriented person that I am, you know, I said, you know, there's a need, there's a need for somebody to speak to these people, listen to these people. You put our communities back in, to our schools. You know, a lot of times you can bring questions up and it seems like they're following deaf ears. I've been to service school board meetings. I've brought concerns to them and a lot of times it seemed like they did follow the fear. Would not get a response. If you did get a response, it was real bad. And we need people on the Randolph County School Boards going to listen to our parents, listen to our students, listen to our teachers and give them a response, whether it's what they want to hear or not. You know, any response is better than no response. And that, you know, that just lit a fire in me. Like I say, I'm out in the community. I've been a volunteer fireman for almost 20 years and I know people's needs. So, you know, just being a Randolph County native and proud to be one, I felt like there was a need for somebody to represent our people and our communities.
Thank you, Mr. Boils. Mr. Cook?
Well, eight years ago, when I first ran for the Board of Education, it was because no one at the time on the school board had kids in school. And I did. And I thought I offered a parent's perspective and I thought they needed that. And I still agree with that. But this time I'm running because of you guys. I love being your advocate. I enjoy being a voice for our parents and also a voice for a lot of our staff members. I think that's very important. And I value education and I truly have a passion to serve and make a difference. And that's why, I mean, this is, this is a tough job. And you have to, you have to have a passion and have it in your heart. And I do that. That's why I do it. I give up a lot of time, give up some family time and certainly are open to a lot of criticism. But at the end of the day, it's worth it and I enjoy it.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler.
My main motivation is to strengthen and build better relationships with our students, parents, teachers, administrators, support staff, and our communities. I feel like I can bring real leadership that will get out there and be active, get out there in the schools. Because you're never going to be an effective leader unless you know what is going on in the schools. There's no way I could sit up there in the central, in the central office area when we have our monthly Board of Education meeting and make decisions without being actively involved in our schools. It just, you just can't do it. I want our schools to provide the best education for all our students at all 31 schools. I want and I believe that we can become the best school system in North Carolina. I refuse to believe we can attain that goal. It's time to take off our me out with our own students and make efforts to help our schools to become better. My goal again is to get everyone actively engaged toward the success of all our students and every school. My home address is where I live. But if I'm on the Board of Education, my address is every school. I don't represent an area that I live in. I represent every 31 school, all 18,500 students. Our Board of Education must be leaders that will encourage to support an environment of involvement. If our parents or citizens feel they cannot be part of the solution, we will never become that top school system I envision that we can build. Together, that's when we can do great things.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Landon?
My main motive for running four years ago was the county dropout rate. We have one of the highest in the state of North Carolina, 80 highest in fact, out of 115 some odd school systems. Today, we have the sixth lowest and that's because of a board that saw the, saw a tremendous need in our, in our system. And the fact that we were dropping out nearly 400 students per year. I'm proud to be a board that saw that need and I'm proud to be part of the school system that, that came up with the plan and that addressed it and delivered results. And it's thanks to people like, people who are in this room like Sherri Trotter, Todd Henderson, Kim Wagner, Kim Johnson, countless teachers, principals, school counselors, I can name many, many more. But we, we, we achieve something that, that very few boards get to achieve in the public school system. And that's something to really be spoken of. And the reason why I'm running this time is this board needs leadership. Leadership from a student's perspective. And having most recently exited public education, I feel like I provide that. You guys are up against so much and as you graduate high school, you're gonna see that more and more every day. College is not easy and the workplace is even harder. And, and I will, and I think we need someone on our Board of Education who really understands the challenges of today's workplace for people who are ready.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Mr. Youngblood?
I'm an engineer by trade. For the last 80 years worldwide, enrollment in college courses in engineering has been approximately 40%. That's worldwide. It's the same way now, today, worldwide, except for the United States of America. It's a level 20%. Matter of fact, in North Carolina, it's somewhere around 8%. The mathematics skills are deplorable. Math and music are international languages. They are probably the most important of all. Granted, we need to learn history. We need to learn English, geography, to know where the problems in the world are at. But math is something that we must have. I know somebody right now that is a graduate of Randolph County Schools that cannot read or write. How did they get out of the third grade? Where is our thinking? Just out of curiosity, how many parents do we have here tonight that are not an employee of the school system that have children in school? Would you raise your hand? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine? That's the largest number I have seen so far in these forums. The very largest number. That's another problem we've got to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. The second question will go to Mr. Cook. Mr. Cook, what strategies would you use to ensure that you have the working knowledge of the day-to-day operations of the school system?
Well, I do know what goes on in our schools. My kids have been in our school system since I've been on this board. And I'm at events, I visit schools. I talk to students, I talk to parents, I talk to staff, I talk to all of the staff, teachers, classifieds, staff. And I listen and I value their opinion. And I also, in a business world, my doors are always open and I have so many people come by and just offer their opinion, inspiration, tell me stories. And I listen. As far as for me, you know, I do visit the schools, but I don't micromanage. That's not my job as a board member. I trust, you know, we can get, we get them up in reports and we can get any information at any time when we request. But I believe wholeheartedly that we have qualified teachers, strong administrators, and a wonderful support staff. And they do their job and they're the professionals and I think they do a great job. And I totally believe that the Randolph County School System offers our children quality education and their parents should be proud of it. I believe that.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Mr. Cutler?
Yeah, Board of Education Member must be attuned to the environment of education by becoming part of the daily operation of the schools. You must adapt and learn about the culture of every school. 31 schools, there's a lot of different cultures. Every one is unique and you have to get in there and learn exactly what is going on at each school. You must be physical and available and encourage ideas and conversations that will posit, positive impact on students and schools. Just this past summer, I asked Mr. Andrews if I could meet with some of the staff in the central office to learn more about their relationship to the schools and how the schools may work as a whole. I was able to learn more about exceptional children, child nutrition, student services, testing, ESF, Title I, Career Techniquet, AIG. Ms. Faust did a great job in talking to me about the Common Core Essential Standards Agreement, which was implemented this year. We also talked about transportation. It's just something we take for granted, but there is a lot in planning our transportation and getting our kids to school safely. We also talked about media and technology, information systems, budgets, and capital expenditures. I feel confident with the staff that sat in the central office and I know that they have a genuine concern with the success of our schools. I'm not going to pretend to sit here tonight and say that I know everything that I was able to listen to and learn that day. But now, at least for now, I know I can say, who I can go talk to and where I can get additional information to learn. I could not, again, be an effective school board member if I did not know the knowledge of these people who work with us, work with the schools every day.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Landon?
There's one thing I've learned in this job is that you have to invest yourself. You've got to invest yourself in, in the local school. You have to invest yourself at the central office to understand the way the school system works in a broader terms. You've got to go to those PTO's, you've got to go to those recitals, you have to go to games. You've got to get out there in the community, talk with people and understand what they're feeling. You guys are our biggest, are our biggest sources of information. And whether you see us at the grocery store or, or you call us on the phone at night, that is the way we, we receive our information. That's how we know what's going on at the school level. But there again, you've got, as Todd said, you've got to trust the staff at the central office. You've got to trust our principals and our teachers to do their job. And when they don't do their job, it is the Board of Education's responsibility to hold them accountable for the job they did not do. And, and I believe as a board member, I do that and, and I am That's all my, that's all my answer.
Thank you. Mr. Youngblood?
We're on question two, right?
This is question four.
Oh, okay, he's moving around, alright. Okay. I think what we need to interface is with the teachers and the parents. And the parents know how their children are being taught and they know what they're being taught, at least a good parent does. They like to follow along with that. And we need as much input as we can from them. The students are here to learn. We need to set a solid granite foundation, not clay and iron. Solid granite. When we teach science, it must be empirical in nature, demonstratable, observable, verifiable. When we teach history, we need to teach all of the history, not trying to turn certain individuals like Christopher Columbus into a villain. But we need input from the teachers primarily. See, the teachers know what needs to be done. But right now, they're ready to put paperwork like this. They don't have time to be specific with some of their students in the area. You've got some students that just need a little bit more help to get them up to speed. Need some students that need a lot of help. Then you've got some students who are quite bright and you'll usually try to use them to help the other students. But you need to be able to work with them. They got time to meet them after school. But they don't have that time anymore. There's just too much paperwork, too much stuff from above. A handful of people demonstrating and telling us how to train and teach our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Youngblood. Mr. Boils?
You know, I've made a pledge, if I'm elected to the Randolph County School Board, I will be in at least one school per week, different school. To find out the day-to-day operations, you have to visit these schools, like you said, by Mr. Cutler. You know, you got to get your people, you got to talk to, you know, from the principal down to the custodian, to the bus drivers, to know what's going on and what concerns they have. You know, I've got friends who do all these aspects of these jobs in the school system. And we need to talk then to see the day in, the day out. Like I say, we take a lot of this stuff for granted, just, you know, hey, they're looking after my kids. And I've been down to the central office, I've talked to some of the people in different areas down there and they, they've heard of me. But you got to be willing to give your time up to do this. You just can't come to a board meeting or a couple of meetings and know what's going on. You have to be willing to get down to the grassroots. I mean, I'm sorry, superintendent just don't know schools by himself. The principal's dumb, the teacher's dumb. I mean, you've got to know from the bus driver to the teacher assistant, what their jobs are, what are they doing, what concerns they have, and what problems they are. Do you know these things? You're not, you know, if you don't know that, you don't know the working knowledge of the school system. I mean, just not the central office down on Fayette Street in Ashboro. It's all over the county and you're going to have to be willing to spend your time and get in there to know what's going on and educate yourself to do all this thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Boils. There's a rebuttal by Mr. Landon. You have one minute.
My communications teacher in college always taught me that if, if your mind goes blank when you're speaking, you just don't speak at all. So I decided not to speak. But I do remember what I was going to say. All of that is important, that we have to know what teachers need, we have to know what our, our social office staff, our parents, what our principals need. But as a Board of Education Member, you need to be able to step back and look at the broader theme of the school system. And that means you need to know what the policies are, you need to understand those policies and how they affect our students and our teachers. And the second thing, you need to understand our biggest governing document and our biggest policy document, and that's our budget. What that budget's priorities are and how it works and how it impacts you as a student.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. There's also a rebuttal by Mr. Cutler. You have one minute also.
Well, thank you. I grew up in eastern North Carolina. For eight years, I worked on tobacco farms. I had never seen a stalk of tobacco grow from the top down. It grows from the bottom out. And that's how we should approach our schools and how we should approach our responsibilities to the schools. Use the people at the bottom throughout our schools, train them, grow them.
Thank you.
The third question will go to Mr. Cutler. Mr. Cutler, what will you do to ensure that all staff are valued and held accountable for student outcomes?
Well, my wife told me I better make sure I answer that one right. You know, I'm going to ensure that all staff is valued by using what God gave us. He gave us two years and one night. I would encourage conversation and participation from our staff to provide ideas and solutions that will benefit our students. It's time to start listening to those who receive all the blame. The professionals who try to teach, and that's what they want to do. They just want to teach. If you ever talk with a teacher, it's like a calling. Everyone that I've ever talked to, they said that they were called and they were affected and touched by someone that talked to them. I don't want them sitting there doing paperwork every day. And our administrators don't need to be dealing with behavioral issues too. Working together to educate our children is not a new idea. Teachers tease that the next generation is better than us. That is what y'all will do. Y'all will make the next generation better. Excellence in education is, is when we do everything we can to make sure our students become everything that they can. As much as I will support our school staff, we're still obligated to educate our children and helping them to a pathway to college or the military, trade schools, or enter the workforce prepared. We need to make sure our students, teachers, and principals are provided the direction to become self-supporting and productive citizens. If we cannot meet those standards for providing that type of education, we will always.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Landon?
I have to reiterate what Todd said. Teachers aren't in it for the money. If they were in it for the money, they would, they would be doing something else. And study after study show that. The way, the way I would value teachers and, and staff and making sure that they're, they're held accountable for student performance is that we need to provide incentives for enhanced student performance with teachers. And secondly, allow teachers to actually teach in their appropriate concentrations. There are teachers out in our school system who are, who might be teaching history who have math. Those teachers need to be teaching math, they don't need to be teaching history or any other subject area. Bolster mentoring programs for teachers who are struggling. There are teachers who need help from other teachers, from more experienced teachers, and they need to have a support system underneath them to help them become better teachers. And lastly, we need to create requirements for student performance and a mechanism for addressing the individual instructor when performance isn't met.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Mr. Youngblood?
One of the best ways to learn a subject is to teach it, as you put on the spot. And I've heard tales about teachers that have to go into classrooms cold turkey and start up and teach the subject matter. Now, if it's in their area of expertise, I would expect them to just step in there and go on. We're not talking about college double degrees here, folks, we're talking about very basics to give every student a firm foundation, so that when you get to the 12th grade, you can go to any direction that you would like to go because you have got a foundation. The incentives, I think, that we need to offer are exactly that. If we've got teachers that are excelling, that the students are learning, and I'm not talking about teachers that are teaching the tests, I'm talking about teachers that are providing the information and getting it across to the students, and they understand, and they move on. But yes, we need to give incentives. I can't see tenure as a situation with the teaching profession. I don't even think it should be involved in anything that's public. Private, if you want to do that with your business, that's fine. But public, I don't think that should be. Logistics, you're talking about everybody in this question here. We're talking about the people, the electricians, the workers, everybody in this thing, you have to have that backup. If you don't have those logistics, just like the military out in the field, you've got one guy there humping a rifle, you've got six to seven people behind each one of those men, making sure that they've got what they need to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Youngblood. Mr. Boils, Boils?
First of all, just to be as one of the school board members, I won't be able to ensure that... Our school board is made of seven members, and all seven members has got to be on the same page to ensure anything in our school system. We all got to work together, we just can't have our different genes. But ensure our staff is valued, you know, you value your staff at the job they do. I mean, that's any kind of work. You know, the better the staff is, the more they're valued. I'm sorry, I've worked, you know, I've worked out of the work, that's the way it is. We have to give our staff the things they need to do their jobs. You know, we've got to give them the supply of technology, whatever, they need to do their job. And as shown, we do have, you know, we value them, we give them what they need, listen to their needs, and help them solve their problems. We, so like Mr. Landon said, you know, if we've got teachers that have a little problem in certain grades, they may be changed, a lot of times, teachers get changed from one grade to the other, they might not have taught this grade before. We have to be important to the teachers, because things change. And far as holding our teachers accountable, far as holding them accountable to the EOG, it's hard to do. I'm sorry, our school systems, demographic changes from year to year. Yes, a good teacher might have a bad year, but then she has another good year because the students change, all students are not the same. I've seen it, I've seen it in my kids' classes. And, you know, but if they're consistently having problems, then that's when we have to hold them accountable for not doing the job they're doing. But if they're doing a great job, we need to reward each teacher for doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boils. Mr. Cutler?
I think we just outcut everything, but I know there's a new move with our new state evaluation that's going to pay a couple of teachers accountable. And I've heard it's talking wrong about maybe rewarding teachers, I'd love to see some special way to reward teachers. I'd love to see more rewarding students who do a great job too. I know one thing is quickly is totally different from what everybody else has said, but it seemed to mean a lot. My goodness, I always had trouble with math, and I was fortunate enough this past year to have a brain, and there's plenty of brain out for teachers, but he was a tight teacher and spent a little bit extra time with my son. And it made such a difference. And I picked up a phone and I called him and I said, "Thank you for what you've done and what a difference you've made." That seemed to be more to him than anything, the parent taking time and notice what a difference he made.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. There's a rebuttal by Mr. Landon.
What was it, was it Mr. Boils had to say? Life's battles do not always go to the stronger or faster man, but sooner or later, the man who wins is the man who thinks he can. I don't like the idea of one person can't make a difference on this board. Being on the same page, folks, we've been on the same page for 50 years, and the SAT scores continue to go down. The only thing we can do is get out from underneath the thumb of the federal government where these social and socialistic ideas are coming from, and get back to the teachers teaching in the classroom what they were trained for without the paperwork and the garbage that they have to put up with from the day-to-day basis setting.
Thank you, Mr. Youngblood.
The fourth question will go to Mr. Landon. Mr. Landon, how will you ensure that our classroom is for 21st century? We have to have 21st century classrooms to be competitive in today's markets and economy. And how we do that is to integrate, first of all, I believe we should have wireless broadband access for all of our schools everywhere in the school. You need to be able to get on, you need to be able to get on your device wherever you are in the school. Teachers with, we need teachers with a 21st century worldview and a 21st century concept of education. The 20th century and the 19th century concept of education is part of what has gotten us into the problems we are in today, and I believe we're moving toward that 21st century concept of education. It's not a concept of education that exists only in the classroom, it is one that exists far outside of the classroom, both at home, in the workplace, and everywhere else we go. And as a board member, I'll be committed to providing the best technology that we can afford as a school system. And I believe, and something that might be a little controversial here is, we need to integrate student devices. There's, you guys have so much technology available to. I see an iPhone there, I have an iPhone. Those things can do incredible things, and why not utilize those resources? And I'm a big advocate for allowing us to integrate our devices for the use of education in our school system.
Thank you. Mr. Youngblood?
I really like this question. Preparing you for the 21st century when most of our students are not prepared for the 19th or the 20th century. Do you realize that an 8th grader in 1940 could read the Federalist Papers, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, Shakespeare, and even a 1611 King James Bible and understand it? Where are we at, folks? Like I said, the SAT scores keep going down, they keep going down.
Thank you. Mr. Boils?
Yeah, the classrooms, you know, 21st century, you know, our schools in the county right now are not equally, they've gotten better, but they're not equal for as technology. You know, a lot of this has to do with, you know, title war money, supplement taxes, you know. But if we want to get our classrooms in 21st century, they need to be equal across the board throughout the county. You know, the state government, federal government, they're only going to give us the southern money to spend on technology. You know, as a school board member, you know, we need to really streamline our county school system and save money to help move this along, to save money to spend on technology if we want to put in our classrooms. You know, we just can't keep on depending on the federal government and state to give us what we need. You know, we've got to act instead of react. Being a progressive board, that's what we have to do. And we want to, you know, count our pings to get our classrooms where they need to be. Yes, right now, random counties are behind in their technology in their schools. We're catching up, but, you know, a lot of times, it's hard to catch up when you get behind. You know, technology progresses fast every day, from one day, the best thing, next day it's outdated. So the school board will have to look for the money to supply the technology for these 21st century classrooms and save on money, work for that.
Thank you. Mr. Cutler?
Let me tell you, you've come a long way since I was first elected to the school of technology. We really have. We need to continue to upgrade, we have mobile computer labs that you can carry laptops and iPads around. The classrooms are completely wired, I think, throughout the county, and we have come a long way, and we have to keep on doing that. Also, if I'm not mistaken, this year, the partnership with Randolph Community College, they need to take up four courses, four college courses, junior senior free charge. We've got to keep doing things like that, partnership, and just keep on looking ahead. You've got to stay one step ahead of everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Cutler?
Our 21st century classrooms are now more geared to critical thinking, collaboration, digital literacy, and problem solving by using technology. Our responsibility as Board of Education members is to ensure all classrooms have highly qualified professionals in technol- technology, and that they know the strategies to teach 21st century learning. Problem solving and communication will be emphasized. In literacy, emphasis will be on building knowledge and understanding literary texts. Learning for the 21st century will emphasize core subjects by using digital technology and communication tools to access, manage, integrate, and evaluate information. Our 21st century must expand beyond the four classroom walls. This new learning will help our students become more prepared for college and career readiness. I'd like Mr. Landon to agree that we should have, we should do more integrated with personal devices of our students, only if we have the capability, internet access, and the safety firewall.
Thank you. There's a rebuttal by Mr. Youngblood, you have one minute as well.
I didn't get a chance to finish because I'm not involved in that, so anyhow. I've been in the computer industry since 1972. Digital data is volatile. We're already seeing books, to where sentences have been changed, paragraphs have been left out, things have been added, and Lord help us if the word God is in there any place, it's going to be gone, folks. Digital data, truth follows, don't you ever forget that. If you want to read something, you read a book. Something's been copyrighted, you can look at the front and see if there haven't been any changes. Keep that in mind, please.
Thank you. There's a rebuttal from Mr. Landon, you have one minute as well.
Bob, it must be something at his table, Paul, yeah. We've made a lot of advancements in the last few years while I've been on the school board. Race to the Top has given us a lot of capacity that we didn't have a few years ago. We have established cloud technology, which even some school systems today don't have, and that's a huge accomplishment. But I think as a board, whoever is elected in November needs to push our legislators hard to get the money that Judge Manning back in, back several years ago, allocated to us of more than $700 million across the state to build technological infrastructure in our school system. I believe only approximately $20 million of that has been allocated back to the North Carolina Public School System. We need that money in our classrooms, and as a board, we need to advocate to get it.
Thank you. The fifth question will go to Mr. Youngblood. Mr. Youngblood, how would you win the votes of our students?
I would try for the vote of the parents instead. You know, I've always tried to tell my kids that some of the toughest things that ever happened in your life is what builds character. The things that you cried about, that you blamed on, that you were hurt. Those things make miracles, they make you the person that you are. The parents want to know that their child has a good education. And most of the students would not thank me for some of the things that I want to do until they get that diploma in their hand, and they know that they've got a good, solid, classical education. At that point there, I think I would win their favor. The old story is, when the going is tough, the tough get going. You challenge somebody, and they'll work harder. You don't just give it to them. You don't teach the test, you teach the my child. But you've got to get the federal government out of your hair to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Youngblood. Mr. Boils?
To win the vote of the students, you know, we're going to have to interact with, you know, this is, tonight is probably some of the most interactive meetings we've had with the students. You know, we're going to have to walk the halls with the students, you have to talk to the students. Yeah, and I'm not talking about going to a Friday night football game, stand on the sidelines or up at the bleachers and talking to kids. You know, Friday night, they could care less about the school doing, you know, going in the school. But you know, you need to have meetings, you know, have meetings with the students. And I'm not talking with a teacher standing there, or looking over your shoulder, administrator standing there. You can sit and talk to a club at a school, talk to them one-on-one, where they don't have to worry about what they say about their school, what's going on in their school. They can express themselves. You know, sometimes as administrators, school board members, they have a administrator too, you know, we put the clamps on our students. You know, we put the clamps on students, tell them, you know, you've got to watch what you say, watch what you do. You know, let these students express their self, express their concerns, express their wants. You know, you can go to the parents, but how many parents out here listen to what their kids say? You know, my kid comes home and tells me what's going on in the school. You know, sometimes you have to factor through some of it, but you know, I'm going to listen to my kid. And if my child has, you know, a problem, I'm going to address that problem. So we've got to listen to our kids. And, you know, to win our students, we win our students, we don't win their parents also, because they know their concern. And, you know, it's six people running for four stocks, you know, thirty-some thousand parents, you know, six people ain't many, one job, it should be hundreds wanting this job.
Thank you. Mr. Cutler?
I sincerely feel like each one of you, I call five of you, but you're good, so. Really. I hope you can tell that what you see is what you get. And I'm a student advocate, and I value your opinion, and I encourage each of you to follow your dreams and be happy with what the path has taken in life. I'm always open to your thoughts and opinions. And I really think one of the greatest programs we started, Mr. Landon started the Student Advisory Coalition, has meant so much to what we come into a board meeting, meeting That's meant so much to, when you come into a board meeting, doing a presentation, or we have one of the dinners, and I remember when this first started, I mean, with the students, they don't hold back. We have had questions and answers in a really informal setting before. Kids aren't afraid to ask you a question, they're not afraid to tell you what they think. And I hope over the years, you guys understand, and I value that, because really, we get it to straight facts from the students.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Mr. Butler?
I would like the Board of Education to consider removing a senior project from the graduation requirements. I have judged senior projects for the last two years. One of the questions I always ask a student at the end of the presentation, is this something you will pursue after graduation? I've only had one student, two years, that even was considered. I would propose that we use those fifteen to twenty hours in the graduation project, and designate five hours per year in grades nine through eleven that could be used for service learning. Service learning is hands-on learning that will engage all types of students while adding the impact of strength in our communities. Students involved in any volunteer activity do better in school than those who do not participate. Service learning is also virtually free, and with decreased competition in college admissions, having this type of structured volunteer work for all our students will be beneficial in our application. I believe students want to make, want to make a difference in, in this world. Through student learning, we give our students a voice. And I want to get them engaged, and get them aware of what is actually going on in our communities, and become part of it. You can be our next leaders, you can be our next coordinators for our nonprofit organizations. When students take on real issues, their learning becomes more meaningful.
Thank you. Mr. Landon?
You guys are what it's all about. And while I want your parents' votes, and I need your parents' votes, I'm not running to sit on a board that educates your parents, I'm running to sit on a board that educates you. And, and having said that, we've got to spend money wisely, and, and spend it on resources that, that bring us into the 21st century and don't hold us back. We need to, we need to invest in technology, we need to provide a quality education, quality educational opportunities that universities and businesses value and pursue. And I think we do that by actively making our school system more flexible. Right now, I feel like we're so structured that students can't create, students can't expand their, their opportunities. I think that if, I think that if you want to, if you attend Eastern Randolph, if you attend a school in, in the county, and there is a program across the county that you want to attend, you should be able to do that. Especially if it's a vocational opportunity. Not every student is ready for a four-year university. And, and we need to be able to, as a school board, we need to be able to think outside of the box and give our students every opportunity possible to make them successful in the 21st century. Many of you guys are getting ready to graduate, but the kids, your contemporaries who are coming through the system now, who attend this school, we're, we're educating them for jobs that haven't yet been created. So that's the reason why I think we need to be, we need to be thinking outside of the box, we need to educate outside of the box. Education doesn't happen all, all in a four-wall classroom, it happens everywhere. We need to understand that, we need to grasp that.
Thank you.
The seventh question is directed to Mr. Boyle. Mr. Boyle, what are your thoughts on an alternative educational program for students with behavioral problems?
Alternative program for students with behavioral problems would be a good thing. Some students just don't, you know, interact with the students that way. But you get them to more of a small group, they perform really well. It's just something about human nature, sometimes you get different people, you know, you put them in a big group, you give them opportunity to handle behavior problems, you know. I mean, some people just want to be seen, or just be claimed. But if you put, I've worked with kids who's like this, and you pull them off to the side, and in small groups, they work fine. I have a youth group, lived at our church for several years, and just to give you an example, we had one kid, when he's in church around his parents, he was just terrible. And he just told us, I do it to activate my parents. But I can take him off to the side and give him a project, and he's the best kid there is. But if we can set up a program to take these kids who seem to be, I mean, true behavior, I'm just not talking about a student, a teacher's having father with her, she just wants to move them around. It happens, I hate to say it, it happens. You know, but if we could set a program to take these kids in small groups and give them a little bit of attention, a lot of times, the behavior, students you have, I hate to say it, may be a one-parent family. You need to be, have a mentor system for these kids, or they have somebody to really look up and who's hard on them, and it will help them out. I've seen it, and I've done it, and it works.
Thank you. Mr. Butler?
Our job is, I understand, these students, all students, all children deserve an education. I mean, if we did everything possible to make that happen. As far as alternative education for behavior problems, if it's a serious behavior problem to the fact that they're disruptive, they're abusing teachers, they prevent students that want to learn for the learning, learning, I have a problem there. I don't think they need to be in the major classroom, I do think they need a program to address that.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Mr. Butler?
Maybe I think too simple about it. I think, I think as parents, you know, we're, we're part of the problem for the behavioral issues of our students in the classrooms. I bet somebody's thinking renascient on that name, what are you talking about? You can't be talking about my child. But, you know, hopefully I'm not. But I don't believe we need an alternative education program for students with behavioral issues, because it is our responsibility as parents to prepare our child to enter their school each day ready to learn. You know, we're blessed to live in a country that provides children with the opportunity to turn to education. You know, and sometimes there are problems, one in five students here in our county get a load of problems. And they enter the schools hungry. There might be problems at home, the parent may have to take a second job, not be available. But we don't need to, and I agree with Tracy about a mentor program. I've done that at Trinco Elementary, we've gone on two years now. But let's not restrict, you know, people who won't volunteer. Let's make sure that we have, we don't put restrictions on them to where they won't even want to come, or volunteer, or whatever. We need to remind them how each of us in this community can commit to educating and telling children. I don't believe we should change the educational program for the student with behavioral issues, but the student and, and us as parents should change to make sure our kids meet that requirement to receive an education and take care of them at home.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Mr. Landon?
An alternative education program is, is needed. And first, there needs, there need to be requirements that, that set those students apart and remove them from the classroom and hold them accountable for their actions. It's not fair to you guys, well-behaved students, to, to be in a classroom that is constantly disrupted by other, by another student. It, it, it takes away from the, it takes away from the quality of education you pursue, and, and it's not, and it's also unfair to the teachers. The teacher is constantly having to deal with one person as opposed to dealing with twenty people and trying to bring you guys along further. I agree with Tracy and what Todd and Gary say, we've got to have volunteers and mentors, we've got to have people both inside and outside the school system, that when we do have problems like this in an alternative setting, that those individuals can come in and they can, they can bring those students along and let, and help them understand what it is to be a good citizen, what it is to not be disruptive and, and bothersome. But, but also, we've got to hold parents accountable. As a parent, it's your responsibility to make sure your student acts accordingly. And I know we have many parents in Randolph County, and some of them don't have the, the expectations that many of, I'm sure, your parents do. But those parents have to be held accountable, and we have to make sure that there are several steps that we take before an alternative, before those, before those students are put in an alternative program. But I think an alternative program will be very beneficial to us as well, because alternative, because those students who are in that program are the students that need help as far as our drop rate goes. Those are our students who are most at risk. And an alternative program will be a huge aid in, in bringing those students back around and catching them up and, and getting them to graduate with a diploma.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Mr. Youngblood?
How many saw the video that the Japanese video did after the tsunami thanking the world for what we did for, what the world did for? Any of y'all see that? You need to research and see that thing. They showed the airport, and they showed Germany, France, Australia, Sweden, all these different companies, countries, either getting off the airplane, which was a commercial airline, or one of their own airplanes. You know what the United States of America said? A carrier task force. And so is it what we're going to do, bomb them back or something? That aircraft carrier has two complete hospitals. Each air, each destroyer escort or aide of them have an outpatient clinic. The aircraft carrier has the ability to produce 200,000 gallons of fresh water per day. That happened because the greatest country on the face of the earth stepped in. That country was based on hard work, and this is what you students are going to hate, it was based on corn wool ponies shirt. Well, I don't think you should hit your child. You're right, you should not hit your child, you should spank your child. And no matter whether the parents want you to do it or not, that's the only way you're going to get control, because you know what they're dealing? Drugs. You've got some that you can't take care of, that don't want to behave, you go get them some kind of drug and slow them down. But keep that in mind, the greatest country on the face of the earth, you were raised on that, folks. Thank you.
There's a rebuttal by Mr. Boyle?
You know, alternative education for fellow kids can work, but they're going to be willing to do this. You know, we just can't put a kid in a classroom and expect him to sit there and do his work. Yes, we want our graduation rate at 100%, but I'm sorry, every kid ain't going to graduate in high school. And you go get some kids, you know, their behavioral problems, as a teacher or Board of Education, we just pass these kids on and let them graduate, we've done our job, no, this is disgrace to pass a kid on. So we need to work with these kids. But I'm sorry, there are some kids, sometimes I hate to say, try to help, but they got to help themselves. And it does begin at home with the parents.
Thank you. There's also a rebuttal by Mr. Butler.
Thank you. You know, we have resources at Parents to address behavioral issues. You know, there's a lot going on with the bullying program. There's a lot of resources there to help you with this type of information to deal with behavioral issues. But we've also got to be consistent at our schools of how we're holding these students accountable. If we're not, if we do not use the bullying program as it is, it's nothing more than a marketing campaign. We've got to be proactive and educate ourselves on the bullying program and address the students with the behavioral issues.
Thank you. There's also a rebuttal by Mr. Butler.
I've noticed in my years on the board, a lot of times, it seems to be getting worse. When a kid misbehaves or seriously misbehaves, a lot of times, it's the teacher's fault, it's the school's fault. Parents play the blame on, on the system, they're blaming on us. Yes, their responsibility, but they won't take the blame a lot of times. And on the other, Mr. Youngblood, he was talking about spanking. I'm sure many of you are familiar with Senator Tillman. Back when you could spank, he spanked me one time, and that's related, may I have been behaving ever since?
Thank you. That concludes the questions for the board. We're not going to do a chance.